We'll call a regular meeting in the New Ulm City Council for Tuesday, December seventeen, two thousand nineteen at four thirty P M. The order, first item on the agenda is consent agenda items, what you wish.
I'll offer a motion to approve those.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda items. Any discussion on any?
I do have a question for our, um, our financial person on the lodging tax collections. If you'll notice from two thousand nineteen, amount of collections is half of what we normally bring in. I'm assuming there's a, uh, something going on there.
Yeah, there's one hotel that hasn't submitted their, their return yet for, for the month.
That must be real unusual because I never see that reduction, so, so it's probably a one-time thing.
They're usually right on time. Yep.
All right. That's all I have. Thank you.
Any other questions, concerns? See none? On favor, say aye.
Aye.
Posed no, motion carries. Item number two point one, public hearing on the two thousand eighteen, two thousand nineteen snow re- and weed removal assessments. Anybody have anything?
Motion to approve.
I'll second it, but it is public hearing.
Okay. That's it. It's all right. Public hearing, anybody like to be heard? Guess not. Have a motion?
Resolution.
Uh, resolution?
I'll offer the resolution to, um, close a public hearing, or close a public hearing and waive the reading and approving the assessments.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to offer a resolution, waived reading. Any more discussion? See none. Finance director, please call a roll.
Counselor Mack?
Yes.
Counselor Schultz?
Yes.
Counselor Fisher?
Yes.
Counselor Christian?
Yes.
President Schmitz?
Yes, motion carries. Item three point one, gravel pit license. That's for M and R Excavating and Holla Real Estate.
I'll offer the motion.
Second. We have a motion and a second, any discussion?
For the gravel, I don't have my, my thing pulled up here. It's, it's still working on it, but I have a question on the Reinhardt, um, license, the gravel pit on Boundary Street. Now, we've had issues with, um, some complaints out there of noise from trial like estates, you know, over the last couple of years. And last year, they, when they renewed this permit, they said they were only had like two weeks of work out there yet and that it was, you know, they were going to be done and now they're renewing it again. And I want to make sure that, um, you know, what their process is for closing that up.
Mr. President, uh, it's my understanding that the gravel mining operation has been completed. Mr. Matt Mathewitz is here, he could probably address your question. I think it was a matter of kind of a courtesy, they were still were going to bring in some fill material and get it to grade and just, uh, thought mining operations had been completed, but Matt can talk to you about it.
Name and address this for the record.
Matt Mathewitz, M R paving and excavating, twenty twenty North Spring Street. Um, yeah, like Steve said, um, this fall, we actually did finish our last week of official mining from that pit location. You'll see there is a stockpile of sand in that location if you drive by there. Um, I had just met with Bolton and Mink actually to go through concept drawings for reclamation and future development plans. So that's kind of the stage we're at. It was more of a, uh, I guess, uh, basically a courtesy thing to get that mining permit here one more time, just to make sure people knew there was activity going on there yet. Essentially, what's left is some of that material will leave the site and then fill material will need to be imported in there to get it to the grades needed for future reclamation.
Okay. The piles that are there, is there any like screening that is going on out there for that gravel or?
There won't be any more. It was done this fall. We spent about a week out there where we actually extracted the sand and screened the rock off of it. Um, that will no longer take place out there. The remaining operations will be taking that out to project sites, the processed material, and then reclaiming that existing site, um, which we're working on determining what the purpose for that site will be here soon.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Yeah, I do say as long as we're talking about it, can you give us an update on the Holla parcel? I, if I remember, my memory is correct, that was about four years ago, we started on, on that property. And there was a lot of controversy back then about dust and dirt, and I've not heard complaints, so you guys have done a good job there, but can you give us an update where, I thought they said five years they'd have it done?
Yeah, that's correct. I think we're right around that fifth year right now and we're actually, we actually had Bolton and Mink out there to survey the property corners for future development there as well. Um, we basically extracted this, the sand out of that area to allow Mr. Holla to potentially, I believe, do some residential or maybe potentially commercial lots. So that's kind of going to go into his hands now on how he wants to proceed with that, so you guys may see some future, um, or have some future discussions with, with him on that. Um, we aren't necessarily involved with the development of that property, just, just the mining is the part we were, we were.
So you'll wrap up this year? What does that mean?
Yeah, so this year we'll finish taking the sand out of that location and then basically therefore, depending on what he purposes that site for, we may help him with additional site development that, at that time. But it won't necessarily be mining then, it would just be site development for whatever the purpose of that property would be.
So you're thinking by fall, late fall, we'll be pretty much done?
Yep, I would say that should be a fair statement if everything goes per planned. Based on the projects that come up this year, by this coming fall, um, fall of twenty twenty, most of that sand should be removed from that site and then it would just be available for development.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else have any questions, concerns? See none? On favor, say aye.
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 Posed no, motion carries. Item three point two, uh, bed and breakfast license. That's for Sharon and Todd McKeef.
I'll move it.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any more discussion? See none? On favor, say aye.
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 Posed no, motion carries. Item four point one, two thousand twenty city New Ulm budget and property tax levy. McCoy, I believe?
Yep, counselors, we finished this up after the public hearing, um, two weeks ago. We made the requested change. We took the hundred and twenty-five thousand out of the building contribution fund and lowered the levy by a hundred and twenty-five thousand. So that brings the levy increase down to two point six four percent for the year. And the tax levy had a total of just under seven point seven million, or seven point, yeah, seven point seven million.
Thank you. Anybody have any questions for?
I just have a comment, Mr. President. I don't know if we, um, remember to thank our department heads and supervisors and staff for working on the budget this year. Um, I think we spent a lot of time working on the details of it and have it at a, a fair property tax increase for two thousand twenty. Um, and with that, I'll go ahead and offer the resolution, waive the reading.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to offer a resolution, waived reading. Any more discussion? See none? Finance director, please call a roll.
Counselor Fisher?
Yes.
Counselor Mack?
Yes.
Counselor Schultz?
Yes.
Counselor Christian?
Yes.
President Schmitz?
Yes, motion carries. Item four point two, consider professional services contract for the Palmer Avenue project. Steve?
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, staff solicited and received four engineering proposals to supply the engineering necessary to modify the roundabout at Menards and extend utilities and roadway on Palmer Avenue to the south to serve the, um, future armory site. That's hopefully going to build this coming summer. Uh, you can see we, uh, went through the ranking of the four firms, um, using the nine criteria that are listed in the request for proposals, and the number one firm ranked at forty-four point one out of forty-five is I S G Auto Mankato for a fee amount of thirty-four thousand, seven hundred and ninety-three dollars. We would recommend that that, uh, contract be awarded and we move forward with this project.
Thank you. Anybody have any questions?
You said you, we've worked with I S G in the past. I don't know, I read that somewhere today.
Yes, we have had several. Their name has changed a little bit over the last several years, but we certainly have experience working with their staff and know most of them.
I'll offer the motion to award the contract to I S G to pro- provide professional service with the Palmer Avenue roadway and utility extension project in the amount of thirty-four thousand, seven ninety-three.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any more discussion? See none? On favor, say aye.
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 Posed no, motion carries. Item four point three, ordinance number nineteen dash zero three five, fifth series, second consideration. Anybody want to, well, I guess we don't have to read it, so. Okay, any questions or concerns?
Just.
Uh, waive the, uh, waive the second reading and adopt ordinance number nineteen dash zero three five, fifth series, amending chapter nine of the city code of the city of New Ulm relative to uses by conditional use permit.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? See none? On favor, say aye.
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 Posed no, motion carries. Item five point one, general wage adjustments for the non-unionized city employees. Chris, or no, who's, yeah, Chris, Sean O'Gorman?
Um, so before you is the, the general wage adjustment, um, and we're looking at, uh, doing three percent, uh, for, uh, for this year. Pretty much in line with what we're asking for, um, the other bargaining units, uh, within the city.
Okay, good. I guess we got a question on this. This is for non-unionized, part-time and full-time ASME employees. Everybody?
This is for non-union, full-time and part-time employees. Shawna Boomgar, N H R Director.
Okay, the full, okay.
Can I, I have a question. The minimum wage, um, has increased to, um, from nine point, or nine dollars and eighty-six cents to ten dollars, and then is the three percent on top of the ten?
No, three percent total.
Three percent total.
Yeah, it's, it's like one point four one percent. Counselor Fisher is the nine eighty-six to ten dollars per hour, so we're recommending the full three percent be established due to the ongoing difficulties of finding part-time staff.
Shawna, as long as you're asking, answering that question in the past, I believe in this particular category, it also authorized the city manager to, um, move up the, the part-time salary if need be, if they couldn't find folks. Is that still in place or should that be part of this or is that not an issue anymore?
So normally what happened in the past is, um, the city manager approved any increase i- and it was done in March. Um, over the past couple of years, we've done it on January first due to the minimum wage increasing.
Okay.
And so that's why we're asking to increase it at that time, but, um, prior to that, I don't believe it needed city manager or a council approval to get that part-time increase approved.
All right, thank you.
I guess I got one question, Shawna.
Yeah.
Uh, as of today, we haven't done the performance evaluation on the city manager.
Mm-hmm.
And I'd like to know what the status of it is or whatever, or the other thing is, is if we could pull the city manager from this salary increase until it's done. I guess this is where I tried to go for many years. I think we need to do the performance evaluation, especially on the city manager and have it tied to the salary increase. Right, wrong, or difference, that's only my own feeling. City council could do what they want, but I think that's the direction that most cities do go. And not saying we're going to change it, I think Chris or whatever, but it's just, I think I'd like to get into a, a routine or a pattern. And supposedly, maybe it's my fault that it hasn't been done or whatever, but maybe I should have asked for it sooner or whatever, but I think we need to.
Yeah, I guess I haven't, you know, um, I think Lisa had sent out packets in the past and I don't think there was a set schedule. I think we were planning on potentially having it as a work session item in January.
Yeah, so the second meeting in January, we're going to bring it as a, a work study session, so you, as the council, can decide on the format you want to do. Um, you know, different options and on how you want to do that and especially moving forward, um, you know, to, to really put that process into place, so it can be on a set schedule. Um, so we know that every year you want to do it before, you know, before, again, part of it is, I haven't even been in the position a year and that's usually when you do it, so that's kind of offset. But if, again, if you want to do it now, that's fine, uh, with me, um, but moving forward, we'll have that set schedule, uh, moving forward. And so we're going to use the January work study session to get that squared away.
And then we can look at, you know, you want to use the same process. Um, Roger's office went through all the forms prior. We didn't see them in our, our office. And if we want to continue that same process.
Well, I guess my, my comment, being on what Chris just made a comment, is if he hasn't been in the position for a year, if the other councils have no problem with it, I don't either. But I guess, like I said, this is the direction I was trying to head anyway.
Well, I think performance evals are, are probably more effective in the early part of a new person's employment, because if there are concerns or maybe a few things we'd like a little different, why wait till that entire year before we bring it up? You know, I think at six months, a review should be done, just to talk about where we're at and what do we like, what do we not, what do we see some improvement areas? We all have got areas that we can improve on, so, um, I, I think your, your comment merits note, Charlie, just, uh, you don't want to give a raise to somebody that, if there's concerns, and I don't think there is, but if there is, then we're, uh, it's a, that'd be a concern that I think the constituents would have, so, um, so I don't know if you're looking for a recommendation on that or?
Or included in a motion or whatever. I don't, that, that's where I'm coming from. I don't know. I know we've always done it this way, but for years, they never did a performance evaluation at all.
Right.
And the reason we started it up is for that purpose and.
The only thing that my, I'm thinking is that it's our mistake that we haven't done the six-month performance.
I agree.
So I don't think, now that I'm looking back at it another angle, it's like you can't punish employee because we didn't do our due diligence.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, I guess I agree that, um, we've done it every year in the past for the last, how many, four, four years? I don't know why we would do anything different. I mean, we certainly want to continue doing that review process. Um, I don't know about tying the salary this year to that. I mean, I can see moving forward if we want to move towards that process and making sure we get the, then the performance review done before the end of the year.
But we can talk about that in the work session too.
Right, right. So are you thinking you, then to move forward with the?
I, I don't have a problem. I guess I wasn't thinking that it wasn't a year and as long as, I didn't know it was set up for a work session to begin with either, so as long as we do something to discuss it, not just.
Is your anniversary date as when again?
April-ish time, twenty-something is, I think.
You know, and to me, i- it's fine. If you guys didn't want to give me a raise until the review, I'm fine with that. It's not, it's not a big deal to me. Um, so again, I, I can hold off on.
My thinking is not to not give you a raise at all, nothing like that. My thinking would have been retroactive anyway, but it's just, I just thought we should have done the performance evaluation already, but no, I would just, I guess, go along with, do it across the boards, fine to me.
I'm gonna, um, offer the mo- or make the motion to, um, approve the adjustments to the non-use and part-time and full-time city employees, including the city manager position and then, um, on the condition that we move forward with that review process.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Any more discussion? See none? On favor, say aye.
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 Posed no, motion carries. Item five, thank you. Do we have, yeah, okay. There's nothing else, right? Item five point two, renew terms and collective bargaining agreement with the L L C, yes. Right here, yes.
So before you is the, the changes, um, to the agreement for L E L S. Um, Shawna and I are here to, to answer any questions, if you have any questions on, on any of the terms that have been agreed upon.
So we just approved, uh, um, an extra holiday for the day after Thanksgiving, so talk about what number three means. I want to make sure I'm clear on that. Is that a second holiday?
No, so they, in, instead of getting Thanksgiving Day, or the day after Thanksgiving, they are getting a, a floating holiday that they can use in lieu of day after Thanksgiving.
So it's not two holidays?
No, it's.
All right, because that would have been a tough sell.
The day after Thanksgiving does not apply to the L E L S members.
Right, and, and they don't get ho- holiday pay then on that day, do they? Or do they not?
No.
No, they do not.
It's just their regular pay.
Yep.
Take it, okay.
Okay.
Yeah, they have different holidays than us currently too, and they don't have any floaters currently, so this is adding one floater.
All right, that helps. Thank you.
Any other questions?
I'll move the proposed action.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any more discussion? See none? On favor, say aye.
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 Posed no, motion carries. Item five point three, renew terms of collective bargaining agreement with ASME.
At this point in time, we'd like to pull this item. Uh, we will have a discussion about why we're going to pull this item in the next, uh, in the next, uh, in the next item. Um, but at this time, we, we'd like to pull it, uh, for further review.
Entertained a motion?
I don't know if we have to do.
Do we have to have a motion to pull? Nope. All right. We'll go on. Item five point four, adopt revisions to the city P U C Personnel Policy Manual.
Okay, so, um, the reason we, we needed to pull her, uh, the ASME contract is it was just brought to our attention that, um, it is a Minnesota state statute that we have to have President's Day off. Uh, and so, um, we need to address that issue moving forward and, um, that'll be part of the ASME negotiations.
Okay.
And we just found that out today.
We just found this out today that, um, and it was verified with the league that according to Minnesota State Statute six forty-five point four four, um, we are required to have, um, several holidays and we're required to be closed for business on several holidays. And one of those holidays is President's Day, which we currently do not have as a holiday, so we need to be closed according to Minnesota State Statute six forty-five point four four on that day. Um, that's why we have tabled the ASME contract is because we need to talk about that holiday.
So I mean, you're going to have to re-address this one as well.
Correct.
So you want this one pulled or tabled?
We need to.
We would like, we would like to, a, a, a discussion and kind of a decision made on what we would like to do with that holiday, uh, because we do need to negotiate these, uh, ASME and, and essentially I B E W contracts, um, and whatever we decide tonight will, is what we're going to bring forward to both, um, negotiating groups.
I think, see, Mr. President, and the policies apply to all the city employees and non-union members at large with respect to holidays.
Yep.
So to the extent you're looking at implementing this, one of the changes would have been adding the day after Thanksgiving. Now there's this additional holiday that's mandatory, and considering the paid time off that non-union employees have, I think staff is probably looking to the council for some direction. Under that state statute, I believe that says that, um, the day after Thanksgiving or Good Friday are optional holidays.
Columbus Day.
Columbus Day, I'm sorry, it was Columbus Day. And Good Friday isn't mentioned at all.
Yeah, Good Friday is an option to, or Good Friday was not mentioned at all.
Right, that's not considered a legal holiday. Um, so I guess the question for the council would be, in light of this new information about President's Day and considering the direction things were going with the day after Thanksgiving, and I believe other employees, otherwise they have two floating holidays, um, there's now another holiday that's come into the mix. So we're looking at, and I think staff has got several options you could consider if you wanted to try and get this back to where you thought the holiday numbers were going to be.
Um, so the two recommendations that, that I kind of favor would be either looking at kind of what the county has done for Good Friday and doing a half-day for Good Friday and then just including President's Day, so then we're just up, um, half a holiday, um, overall. Or removing Good Friday and giving President's Day is kind of the, the options that I would recommend.
Do we have Columbus Day as a holiday?
No.
No.
Switch with that one.
I guess my thought would be to remove the Good Friday holiday and, and do the President's.
That would be my thoughts also.
I'm going to go in agreement with the other two councils on that one. I mean, we graciously gave that after Thanksgiving. Uh, now that we find out we have to get President's Day off, I'd go along with that too, scrapping Good Friday.
I don't know what that's going to do for your negotiations.
I don't know, but we'll, we'll be negotiating.
But I'm, is this something we can decide today? Because it's not, I mean, it's sort of in front of us, but it's.
I think you're determining that the holidays for non-union employees are included in the policy manual.
Yeah.
So if you, if you wanted to adopt the manual with these revisions, that would be something additional that you would need to consider.
Correct.
I guess what we're doing is we're not taking nothing away, we're just flip-flopping.
Right, we are, yeah.
Right.
So, I mean, we're actually given extra to begin with, so.
Yes, yes.
I guess I would support it.
And I'm not sure how common that Good Friday holiday is amongst.
Yeah, I don't know. We found out today, so I didn't have time to take a look at what other cities do, but, um, it isn't a, a federal.
When we did our survey, I'm sure it was in there, but I don't remember back then.
Yeah, I had the numbers on how many, but I didn't specifically have what they all included as holidays.
Right.
Um, a lot of them had included, I remember, the day after Thanksgiving instead of Columbus Day, but I don't, I don't recall, call anything on the Good Friday.
I think the other alternative would be to lose a floater, and I don't think most employees would want to do that.
I don't think that they would.
I think they would, if they had to give something up, they would rather sacrifice the Good Friday.
And they can always use the floater for Good Friday.
Right, that's right.
Right.
They've got options.
Correct.
And I heard compliments from employees that thanked us for having Friday off after Thanksgiving. They've got options. And I heard compliments from employees that thanked us for having Friday off after Thanksgiving, so.
Yeah, the only other um re- real bigger bigger change is um the change to the meal reimbursement policy. And that change um is including some language that um you will get a meal allowance unless a meal is provided at the training or at a hotel. And then also to clarify when you get breakfast and dinner reimbursements. So the breakfast reimbursements may be claimed if the employee must leave his or her home by five A M. And dinner reimbursements may be claimed if the employee cannot return home until after eight P M. So that's clarification that myself, the city manager and the utilities director talked about um to clarify that policy more for reimbursement purposes.
I guess I'd support that. You gotta have some.
Yeah, there was too much leeway in that, so we just, we needed something to clarify that.
The only one that I didn't, that I question is um if you're gonna arrive home after eight o'clock, there's not too, I mean, I eat, I certainly eat before eight o'clock. You know, I think that that gets to be kind of late to me, you know.
It's I, it's what the city of Mankato uses, so that's kind of the language that I use. I mean, if you want to make it earlier, that, I mean, that's up to council.
Yeah, that's up, I mean, I'm just throwing that out there, that it just seems kind of late to me, but.
The county is moving to seven P M. They didn't, they didn't have times before, so now it's six A M. and seven P M. Starting January first.
Okay.
So you're right, I think it's a little.
I think that's a little late, but.
Um, Mr. President, Shauna, I mean, is there any, I don't know if there are employees who are working before five A M? If they're like, this apply to people, if they're plowing snow or?
They they could be starting work at four A M.
So it would apply to them?
Um unless they're going outside um for business purposes or for training, it wouldn't apply to them.
Right.
I wouldn't have, I mean, if if that's something you wanna, it makes sense to you and you want to move that to six and seven, I mean, six A M. and seven P M., I wouldn't have real issues. Five A M. and eight P M. isn't any magical time. It was just, I mean, if you.
Right away, I thought the five A M. to me was more upsetting than the seven A M. So I was just like, whoa, that's early. And if we can reimburse them a breakfast versus paying for an overnight, that's, that's a fair deal.
I guess I kind of agree with you guys go, same as like the county then six and seven and be done with it.
I'm fine with that.
They're just numbers.
That's fine.
Yep, always adjust it if we don't.
Yeah.
If we're seeing, if you're seeing problems, you need to let us know.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely. Yeah, that's fine.
I don't think there's ever been any problems anyway, but just need to specify sometimes.
Yeah, that's fine. Otherwise, it's just um language cleanup, um adding some addition to some short-term disability language, giving some um updating our mobile device policy to include language on the hands-free operations and nothing, nothing else major.
Okay. So we have two basic changes, recommendations to the policy manual. You're clear with those two are?
I am clear.
So I'm gonna offer a motion to approve those revisions based with the two changes that we've discussed.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any more discussion? See enough? On favor say aye.
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 Pos, no, motion carries. Item five point five, two thousand twenty City of New Ulm Emergency Operation Plan.
Dave Walker, I'm the Emergency Management Director for the city. And um we do this on an annual basis, the Emergency Operation Plan is a framework for the city to deal with, and we have disasters and situations like that. So I don't know if there's any questions or anything.
Anybody have any questions, Sir Dave? Actually, not a question, just a uh congrats to you or thank you. I know this is a lot of work and whatnot, used to deal with this, nice job. Very nice job to you and the whole committee.
Yeah, I have a committee that, you know, we meet on a, on a regular basis. We meet monthly and then we generally after a meeting, we try to take care of a a couple chapters. And then we also meet outside of that. Um Chief Mochel is part of that, Elwood Zabel, Kristy Holes and Kathy Schaefer. You know, really helped me as far as kind of like that executive leadership as far as updating the the plan. So there is a lot of work that goes into it and a lot of um input that I get from the committee.
I would concur with that. There's just a lot of data in here, and I know we've talked about it in the years past, but um compliments as well to your staff and that work on, the committee that works on this and with that, I'll offer a motion to approve the two thousand twenty emergency plan.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any more discussion? See enough? On favor say aye.
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 Pos, no, motion carries. Item five point six, New Ulm Police Department Policies. Dave?
If there's any um questions regarding that, that's, you know, the other hat that I wear is the chief of police. We um, the best practice is that we're updating these things on an annual basis and I, I want to, you know, certainly make sure that we're we're doing that. We do get audited on our our policies um that it's by the state of Minnesota. The the two branches of government from the state that that audit us, um that were subject to audits would be the Minnesota Peace Officer Standard and Training Board, the Post Board, and then also the B C A, the Bureau of Criminal Apprehension. Um generally, the B C A, it's like when anytime that we're dealing with data, because generally we're collecting the data um from the state and then also um most of the the conduct is is something that the Post Board is is more involved in as far as the oversight. But again, we're we're certainly subject to both their audits, both scheduled and then random. We'll have a scheduled audit coming up sometime in two thousand twenty. They've, they've let us know that's from the Post Board. And that's just a regular, you know, they 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 go through all the the agencies and it's just our our turn, the sheriff's office and then also um the New Ulm Police Department will be subject to that audit. And then, you know, occasionally we'll have random audits. So they, you know, it's it's definitely the, it's changed um as far as in my career in law enforcement, there's a lot more focus on on the policy. So, you know, we certainly take them serious. If there's any questions that I can answer.
I have not seen this before, at least I don't recall. So is this a new procedure to have this come in front of us? Is something on your behalf or something that's police departments are doing?
Something more on my behalf um as far as new administration and and again, um following what's considered best practices from the state.
So does the police commission then take a look at this too?
No, the city attorney does though.
Okay. Cause part of me is, you know, and having some involvement with law enforcement, I know some of these areas, but I was like, how could I really say, well, I don't like that policy because it's not my world. It's it's your your area, so. Uh but you're okay with this information being public and um and in some cases, I would assume if you're gonna do this every year, there there might be questions on certain policies. And I'm assuming you're okay with that.
The the ones I'll be sharing, counselor, would be the the ones where there's there's changes, because when it's approved, I'm I'm assuming that it's it's approved. And then if we have changes to to certain policies, um and a lot of times that's by direction of the of the state, or, you know, there's been been something that that prompts that. You're you're seeing a lot more changes now than what we maybe historically saw a decade ago, fifteen years ago. But again, we're we're certainly responding by higher governments' recommendations.
Well, transparency is very helpful. So these will will bless, and then next year you'll only bring those that have changes.
Correct.
Because when I first looked at this, I'm like, well, I wonder what the changes are, but they're all new.
And 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 new and new policies is as well. So like, you know, what, I can't, you know, anticipate exactly um, you know, what, where we're gonna see changes, but I think on a regular basis, we're gonna see more of it from from the Post Board, because that's exactly what they've told us as far as chief law enforcement officers, that that we're gonna be seeing more changes coming down. And and again, that's dependent on the legislative um branch of government. Does that answer your question?
It does, thank you.
Anybody else? Thank you.
So with that, I'll offer a motion to approve the New Ulm Police Department Policies.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any more discussion?
They're effective January first, two thousand twenty.
See enough? On favor say aye.
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 Pos, no, motion carries. Item five point seven, Police Department Vehicle Purchase. Roger, are Dave and me?
Okay, thank you, um, Mr. President. We're um, we're at that point in time where we're looking to purchase um two new squad cars. And our recommendation is is Ford, and I I think in the request for council action, I explained that in in some detail. But um, essentially, I'm trying to get as many miles as we can out of the vehicles, but we're we're just at that point in time now where we we believe we have to replace the higher mileage vehicles. And um Chevy would not, was unable to give us a quote. They would, they wouldn't do it simply because they have a backlog right now because of the, because of the strike that they encountered. So they're not manufacturing, they're not accepting any quotes, um anything past September. And then Dodge was unable to to meet the specs that we we had provided. Um there's a couple of them that that they were unable to to meet. The the primary one is the the rear seventy-five mile an hour impact rating. So we have, so what we did is we we always offer, and that's that's been our practice, because we always want to give um local businesses a a certainly a chance at everything, but we we go through the the state bid. So of course, we we have to um ask for a bid from them or or a quote. And then we also contact the local businesses and and we did that. The the recommendation is is space Ford.
I do have one question for the chief. That was brought to my attention with that seventy-five mile an hour rear collision. Is that just our department's policy? Because I, it's, I know it's not a state statute, is it?
No.
Just something that we request?
It's it's very common, but yeah, it's not, it's not required by the state. I think it's a a reasonable and a, you know, a personally, I think a necessary safety rating. But like, for example, to to maybe elaborate a little bit on that, Counselor Christian, when we, like, we purchase um parking enforcement vehicles or the investigator vehicles, we don't ask for that safety rating at that point, just simply because, you know, reasonably speaking, they could be involved in a traffic stop some way somehow, but realistically, no. You know, wi- within reason, that that safety um factor, I don't think is is as relevant as you do with a with a Mark squad car that is doing traffic stops that are involved with, you know, it's pursuit rated. So they're they're involved potentially with um high-speed chases.
And just one other question, was that the main reason? That's for the uh the Jeep Dodge Ram? That was the biggest reason it was taken out? Were the other ones pretty close?
Well, the safety, you know, I'm a, that was the primary factor, was the the rear seventy-five mile an hour um impact rating. But the the other, ano- another factor, I'm always, you know, careful how mu- I'm willing to certainly share share everything, but the other thing is, we're looking for like for the column shifter, that was part of the the request as far it for specs as well, because if we were gonna switch everything over, it's gonna cost us approximately another thirty-five hundred dollars in in furniture for that, for that Dodge. And then there's, there's some other factors as well. We we researched it and we're looking at, we talked with a a local agency that has a Dodge right now, and they don't have enough room in the back. Now, as far as the specs, that wasn't, that that's that's certainly a a factor, but I just kept the request for council action focused on the specs that we provided.
Okay, I understand. I I just brought it up, I mean, because there was a twelve thousand dollar difference with the two vehicles.
Correct.
But one of them being a major safety factor, so.
But is the seventy-five mile an hour really an important factor since we are within the city limits and most of the speeds are thirty, thirty-five or less?
If I'm, uh President Schmitz, if if I'm doing a, you know, a I'm looking at risk and I'm trying to do a risk assessment, I think it's a a really big deal for patrol squads, because I mean, I don't, I can't control that vehicle that's coming up from behind. Um you have some erratic driving, you you have stopped, someone stopped on Broadway, or we have even rights outside town. Um I think it's a, I think it's a really nice safety factor that I think we should take advantage of.
Okay, my other question then is, is do we keep the spare tire in the vehicle?
They haven't in the past. I as far as my administration, we're we're certainly keeping it in there, because, you know, I've I've even looked at that in the past. It's still the rear seventy-five mile an hour safety um impact rating still benefits you whether that that tire's in there or not, but you it fully, you get the full benefit with having the spare tire, not not a smaller one, but the actual full spare tire back there. So, you know, even if we build our stuff over it, because, you know, we have a lot of cabinets and stuff like that that we have in the back. I don't know if you've ever seen one of our back of our squad cars, but we have, we basically have furniture back there. We have cabinets um that are down there. Even if we're not pulling out that spare tire, just to have that that safety rating, that that full um rear impact rating benefits it. And I mean, I I'm certainly gonna support keeping that in there.
Yeah. Well, I was, the only reason I'm questioning, because I was emailed the specs. And according to the specs by ex- Ford, the only seventy-five mile per hour component is with that spare tire. Without it, it is not. So if we're taking the spare tire out, then we shouldn't have it as a spec.
I agree with that.
So you say and you want them in, well, then I don't have a problem with it.
Yeah, I mean, I I I I support it, because I mean, I I would never want to be in a situation where I'm compromising the integrity of that manufacturer safety rating. Because I, I mean, this day and age, that's taken away potentially from that integrity of that squad car.
Okay. So you will make sure they're in there?
Yes.
Well, and you mentioned the other thing, the column, which would add.
Right, I underst- yeah.
And just briefly, we had a little twelve-year-old going ninety miles an hour not too long ago. So they do get over thirty miles an hour in our community and around our community. Not very often, but we.
I had a discussion with somebody about all this already, I had a type song. There was a lot more components in there other than the seventy-five, and I know what they are, so I agree.
I have a a quick question when I look at this. What's the ninety-nine W hybrid? Unlisted on here.
Good timing.
It's not, it's not a plug-in vehicle. It doesn't have a hybrid component to it, an electric.
I'd have to look, I mean, I have to look exactly what that what that spec is. What what else does it say on there? It just says hybrid.
Three, three point three liters, so that'd probably be the engine, hybrid engine, maybe.
It says ninety-nine W dash hybrid. I was just curious if it had a, I would think you would know.
Sometimes those abbreviations don't give you a lot.
No, no.
Like when they give the the three coded thing, I always have to, you know, look up and I I look on a, on a site on the on the internet to kind of translate that.
Yeah.
I guess moving forward, like you say, I just received a call about this from one of the uh dealerships about this, but you know, now hearing that from call and shift to, you know, floor to the council shift and then the rear tire, you know, and moving forward, I don't know if the Dodge is available on the column or not, or if it's a council and things of that nature, and and hearing that we'd have to buy furniture and, you know, so I'll support buying the Ford at this point in time.
And you had said that Ford or that Chevy at this point is not offering squads, but that's not permanent.
That's not permanent. That's correct, Counselor Golds. It, they they just, they responded that they said we're unable at this time because they're they're taking their marching orders from the manufacturer from from Chevy, and they said, we we cannot give you a quote at this time. And they, you know, we asked them to guesstimate when, and they said later on in two thousand twenty, there there's some like, something around June.
And we usually replace one or two cars every year?
Two.
Two usually each year.
Yeah, so, excuse me, um the ninety-nine W is a three-point-three-liter V-six direct injection hybrid system.
Okay. Thanks for the phone.
Any other questions?
Any more questions?
Councillor Schmitz and members of the council.
Thank you.
Thank you.
With that being said, I'll offer a motion to the New Ulm Police Department to purchase two, two thousand twenty Ford Explorers that are pursuit rated from Chuck Spade Ford in the amount of seventy-four thousand.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Any more discussion? Seeing none? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All's no, motion carries. Item 5.8, Park and Rec Donations. You, Dave?
Okay, I'll, I'll take this one, and I'd, I'd really like to nominate the Park and Rec for our professional fundraisers, but I can't do that. Okay, I'll offer the resolution, waive the reading, to accept the donations offered to the City of New Ulm Park and Rec Department as outlined. Okay, thirty-eight dollars cash from Kathleen Backer, hundred and, hundred and ten dollars cash from Jeff and Becky Bregoman, hundred dollars cash from Marlene and Dennis Mandelfeld, two hundred and fifty cash from Glenn and Tammy Stolt, five hundred cash from Thomas Green, ten dollars cash Wayne Lipke, thirty dollars cash from Virginia Chelsias, eighty-five dollars cash from John and Jane Gray, fifty-five cash from Eugene and Sharon Retka, forty-three cash from Ron and Marlene Marty, fifty-three cash from Rebecca Cordis and Bruce Edward Timmerman, fifteen cash from Gloria Steer, fifteen dollars cash James and Roberta Heath, thousand dollars cash from Jeff and Becky, Becky Bregoman, hundred dollars cash from Paul and Julie Fromm, hundred dollars cash from Gerald Ubel, two hundred and ten cash from Terrence and Janet Dempsey, two hundred and thirty cash from David Fabian, one thousand forty-eight cash from Clifford and Cheryl Vath, and a hundred and fifty cash from Charlie Brown Rider, that's for the amphitheater, and then from others. Twenty thousand dollars cash from EJ and Ellen Van Kura, two thousand cash from Joan Krivika and James Odine, hundred dollars cash honoring the German Park improvements in Paverstone, honoring the Narren of New Ulm, Susan Hogan, hundred dollars cash honoring Matthew and Emily Hagberg, and the final donation for the splash pad, sixty-five thousand, two hundred dollars cash, second half of the pledge from Barb Harrelson. Thank you to the Park and Rec with a grand total of ninety-one thousand, five hundred and fifty dollars in cash.
And I think there was one small error, if I heard you wrong, on number...
Fifteen.
Fifteen. You said a hundred, and it was a hundred and eight, just for the record.
Oh, I cracked that, a hundred and eight dollars cash.
Yep.
Paul and Julie Fromm. Thank you to everybody.
You need a second.
You need a second, yeah. Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any more discussion? Seeing none? All in favor, say aye.
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 All's no, motion carries.
Resolution.
Oh, resolution, sorry.
Councill Fisher?
Yes.
Councill Mack?
Yes.
Councill Schultz?
Yes.
Councill Christian?
Yes.
President Schmitz?
Yes, motion carries, and thank you, everybody. Item 5.9, Community Events.
I'll move it.
Second.
We got a motion and a second. Any more discussion? Seeing none? All in favor, say aye.
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 All's no?
Resolution.
Huh?
Resolution, sorry about that. Offer as loose, waive the reading. Finance Director, please call to roll. Now I got something on my page here.
Councill Fisher?
Yes.
Councill Schultz?
Yes.
Councill Mack?
Yes.
Councill Christian?
Yes.
President Schmitz?
Yes, motion carries. Item 5.10, 2020 Budget for Conventioner Visitors Bureau.
Councill President, I can make a comment on that, because I do attend the CBB meetings. Everything was went over with all the members. There were a few minor changes, how they were gonna allot money to scratch from one part of the budget, go to the other part. They didn't have any issues on it, it was voted, approved by the chamber, so I'll motion to approve, beginning January one, 2020.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
Do people feel pretty confident on the revenue?
Yep.
Okay.
Well, I hope. First of all.
Yep.
Seeing none? All in favor, say aye.
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 All's no, motion carries. Item 5.11, approved, uh, uh, 2020 budget, oh, excuse me, that one we just had, let's go back here. Two thou, Narren, or the Nara, New Ulm Foshing Decorations, that's for February sixteenth, 2020.
Hang the rags, as we always do.
Yep, they're gonna, I'll offer the resolution to waive the reading and allow them to hang their colorful strips to decorate the downtown area.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, and in the discussion?
Hang.
Seeing none? Finance Director, please call to roll.
Councill Fisher?
Yes.
Councill Mack?
Yes.
Councill Schultz?
Yes.
Councill Christian?
Yes.
President Schmitz?
Yes, motion carries. With no more business, I'd like to wish the public and everybody out there Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year, and we'll be back next year. Meeting adjourned.